Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Towns Council for March 3, 2014. Deputy Mayor, if you could lead us in the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dolores?
Counselor Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Cotton is on his way. Counselor Manusos.
Here.
Counselor Martino.
Here.
Counselor Ralph.
Here.
Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry.
Here.
And Mayor Montanari.
Here, thank you. We do have an executive session scheduled at the end of the meeting, Personnel Matters. With that, we will move into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this evening, public comment. Gus?
Good evening. Mayor, how are you doing?
How are you, Gus?
Fine, thank you. Tonight, I would like to set the record straight about Morrison Avenue. The residents of Morrison Avenue chose the design of the reconstructed walk from Walker Hill Road to Orchard Street. The residents never endorsed the reconstruction and the new construction of the sidewalk east of Orchard. Before the reconstruction of the walk, the only good sidewalk on Morrison Avenue was located east of Orchard, on the south side. The worst configuration of the sidewalk and roadway after the reconstruction is exactly at this location, where the town was asked numerous times that the existing walk east of Orchard was okay as it was, and to my knowledge, no one ever complained about the existing walk or lack of it east of the street. In summary, the following happened east of Orchard. The town spent money to construct a retaining wall as the result of moving the edge of road closer to the house at the corner of Morrison Avenue and Tifton Road. The reconstructed walk in this area has the same configuration as the old walk. Yes, with no snow shelf. We did not have a snow shelf before; there is no snow shelf now. The new sidewalk on the north side of Morrison Avenue, just east of Orchard, has only a two-foot snow shelf. The reason for this, or should I say the excuse for this, design was to save two old trees. It is sad to know that the town personnel never asked the property owner about those trees. They are so big that within a few years, they will have to come down. In the meantime, we have constructed a sidewalk where there was none and created a more dangerous situation for the students attending Silos Dean Middle School. The residents of Morrison Avenue appreciated the time that the town has spent to inform the residents of the design, but when it's all said and done, the town is still responsible to provide all the residents with a safe traffic condition. Here we go again. The intersection side distance from Tifton is only 232 feet as measured by the town. This distance does not meet the required distance for the posted speed, the posted speed of 25, and most of the traffic goes 31 miles per hour or greater. What is the town reason not to install the stop sign where it is required by the Connecticut on roadway standards, and yet do nothing to remove the stop sign where, according to the town manager, are not required? That's on Hillcrest and Orchard. By the way, the last two weeks, a Peter Pan bus went down the street at least once a week. Can you imagine a car stopped at the stop sign on Walker Hill Road and Morrison Avenue while a commercial bus is trying to make the turn to go down Morrison Avenue? I drive a pickup truck, and I tell you, when I come from Walker Hill onto Morrison Avenue, it's hard for me to make that turn. Can you imagine? A Peter Pan bus. What the heck is a Peter Pan bus doing in there? I don't know. The no-parking sign at the south side of the street were placed at the back of the walk to keep them safe from the snow removal equipment. It seems that we worry more about the safety of the sign than the safety of the residents. And with that, I thank you again for allowing me to express my opinion.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Cook?
Hall Count, 100 Executive Square. I was provided with the superintendent's new proposed budget, and I have a suggestion, R2. As we all know, the Town Council has no authority as to how any monies are spent by the Board of Education and the superintendent. This Town Council cannot provide the BoE less monies than was provided last year by state statute. The superintendent has asked for a school resource officer, and that officer should be at Town expense and under the Chief of Police. Superintendent has no experience in law enforcement or public safety. Chief of Police does. Question will be later on, with a separate question altogether, that should the town charge back the expenses? That's another matter. As you must give the Board of Ed the same monies as this past year, this superintendent, I'm told, is an extremely smart guy, smarter than any of you and our town managers. That's what I was told. And will certainly make do with last year's budget. And he certainly knows more about education than anyone on this council, or probably in this room. And since you have no authority over him or the BoE anyway, leave him alone, and they'll be fine. Now, by doing this, and a couple of other things, very similar to this, the town budget can also remain the same as last year or be lowered, and the state will consider it a miracle that a Democratic-controlled council actually lowered taxes, and you will all be considered for governor. Well, at least Paul and Jeff Bridges will be. Just a thought. Thank you.
We'd have to run against one another.
Was there a comment, Jeff?
No, we're just teasing each other.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Young.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I noticed in the Hartford Current where there was an article regarding the town grand list dropping by 5.6 percent. That seems to be, you know, as far as our neighboring towns go, that's quite a drop. I don't know if it's the worst among our neighboring towns, but that's quite a drop in what is it going to do to our taxes going forward into this next year. I know in the article, the town manager mentions that there were greater drops in the state, 33 percent in Waterbury, 25 percent in New London, 24 percent in Nansonia. Who cares about those places? Those are cities; those are not towns like we are. They have worse problems than we will ever have, or until we become Hartford. But the thing is, we're looking at a hefty drop in how this is going to sift out against tax increase as far as the mill rate goes. And I don't honestly know. I know your assessor was up one night up here talking about the grand list, but I don't recall what's going to happen, anyway. But I think that we're heading in, we're continuing to head into bad times, and if we start seeing the mill rate go up, it's going to startle everybody, and we should really be shooting for zero, if not less, increase coming up this year. The other night, I attended the Board of Education meeting where they're talking an increase of 3.75, and I think it's really going to end up at 3.89 or some number like that. But here we go again with another hefty increase. They're talking about laying off or not renewing certain classes of people, but then bringing on new people. And looking at the budget, there are issues that I think need to be squeezed and massaged and reduced. With that said, you know, there was another article in the Hartford Current called Under Education, said $35 million shock at the Capitol. Again, this is State Education Department; they're shocked. I don't know why they're shocked. When we think of the deal that they pulled off in Weathersfield with the Connecticut Light and Power Company and where the investors who are always looking for as much money as they can out of an investment, where they left $2 million on the table for the town of Weathersfield, I understand why there are $35 million in the red, because I'm sure that besides doing us, they probably did a number of other communities around the state to help them all out, give them some extra money. But it's all borrowed money. It's not money that they have that's fluid; it's stuff that they have to go and borrow. And of course, the whole economy lives on borrow, and it crops up a false economy, and we should be looking at reducing. But here in Weathersfield, I don't know, I hope that we do something about it, Mayor. There was another article, there was another article in the Hartford Current that was called entitled "State's Physical Foundation Week: Deficit Looms." And this was an op-ed by James Smith, Chairman and Chief Executive Officer of Webster Bank. And he says, and I'll just read a couple little sentences, "Most economic forecasts for Connecticut agree on one point. Large deficits resume with a vengeance in 2015, when projections indicate a state budget deficit of $1.1 billion and more as embedded spending increases outpacing revenue growth. Those numbers worsen as we finally and appropriately set up to fund our unfunded promises." I know there's a lot of promises up at the state, and we have some promises here. And, you know, he goes on that he's now creating a little group going around the state, talking to people as to how are we going to get through all these problems. And I think it's something that people in Weathersfield and every community around the state should be listening to. I think it's severe, what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into council reports. Council reports. Mike?
I've got three short ones, two from the Recreation Department. There was a grant that was received from the Rec Department for the Nature Center for people to come in from other nature centers from around the country to evaluate the Nature Center. They were here Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I went and met with them. I know Jeff Bridges did. I don't know, I didn't see everybody who met with them, but I'm assuming other people in the community and maybe even on the council met with them. They really want to keep the place self-funding, but also get the town more involved and really figure out a way to kind of move it forward, because we have a great area with our river. We have all different parks around the town, so they would really like to help us kind of move the Nature Center in the right direction. The second thing is the dredging started. I know we talked about it last time, but it has started. Coast Guard Cutter or Breaker, whatever they are, came up the river, broke up the ice, got the barge up, got the dredging equipment up here, and I believe they started, Jeff could probably give us an update on that, or Kathy's here also. And then the last thing is Channel 14. They're looking for volunteers, and they're looking for almost anything, taping of events, producing shows, hosting shows, typing up announcements, returning calls from emails from the public, making copies of DVDs, anything else you could think of that a television station could do. They're looking for volunteers to help out. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. Other council reports? Jeff?
Welcome back from New York.
It's a pleasure, sir. I'm here a little bit late, apologize. Bear with me, I have, like Counselor Hurley, I have three reports. One from the Library Board. I think we've probably heard that, or are aware that, the library director for 12 years, Laurel Glutin, will be retiring mid-year. Search Committee has been formed, looking for a new library director. They're going to be looking for some public input. They have a search committee formed, and they've, using a salary range of $90,000 to $105,000 per year, which is comparable to what the current director is earning. So the hope is that we'll obviously have someone new on a little bit before Laurel actually leaves, so that there'd be a reasonable transition. Also, the Library Board approved a budget with a 7 percent increase. Some of that's driven by the fact that just because of the folks who work at the library and the allocations that the town's assigned, they actually get a larger than you would then proportionate share of the higher pension costs that we're going to be seeing when we go through the budget. But in addition to that, they're actually looking for, have a full-time teen librarian, and they're also looking for it to do a little bit more in terms of computer replacement. So as we go through the budget, we'll be addressing that increase. But the Library Board and Director presented that budget to the Budget Committee last week. Insurance Committee, the good news continues for the town, looking at virtually no increase in health care costs for next year. And, you know, after rapid increases in health insurance costs for the town for about, probably about five or six years, leading up to about two or three years ago, we've actually seen three years of reductions in health care costs, and I think in aggregate, it's been in excess of $1 million a year. So that's been a very good story in the town budget, lightly. It's driven by not only good experience, meaning our town employees have been healthier, we also have fewer town employees to insure, but I think that's also a result of work we've done over the last, you know, five, six, seven years in terms of increasing the co-pays that the town employees must make towards their insurance and deductibles as well. Lastly, the Budget Committee, as I mentioned, did meet. We heard from our auditors, got a clean audit. They had some real praise for the finance personnel, the finance professionals within the town, so that was good. There were a few recommendations, both on the town side and the board side, that'll be forwarded. And then, you know, as we go forward, in the very near future, we're going to be hearing from the Board of Education on their budget, and then we're looking for a couple of dates where we would actually probably have, probably a Saturday where we're going to go through much of the town manager's budget as we go forward. So that's just beginning. So thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you, Jeff. Welcome back.
The Building Committee met last week as well, and just one quick highlight on that. The asbestos abatement was completed over Christmas, or February break. Air quality was good, and obviously the gyms are reopened, and they're back to the regular schedules there. So that's all, at this point, on the Building Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jerry?
Yeah, the Historic, I'm the liaison to the Historical Society, and there was a meeting last week, and there's a very active board. They were thrilled to see somebody from the council, so it was very nice to be that welcome. Their big event coming up is on April 12, the Taste of Weathersfield, which is their major, one of their major fundraisers. It'll be, if you become a patron, it starts at 6 o'clock. If you buy a general ticket, it starts at 7:00. And they've expanded the types of food and the representatives from the town and surrounding restaurants, surrounding town restaurants that will be there. So they're looking forward to having a good participation as usual, and they're working on a marketing report, they're working on quite a few activities, so they're quite an active board, and I was happy to be there.
Thank you, Jerry. Tony?
I have three reports tonight. First one, the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for the People with Disabilities met on February 19th, and they talked about the upcoming legislative workshop on February 25th, where people could go and discuss the needs of individuals with disabilities. They also talked about the problems from the snowstorms, where people weren't completing the walks after storms, and the fact that curb cuts weren't put through so people could get across the street, and they would like to see that met. They talked about at Millwood's Park, the need for a family bathroom that would be not just to help with the kids, but for spouses to help each other where there's seniors involved. And their next meeting will be at the Church Home Village to go over the transportation needs of citizens. Second group I met with was the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. The senior club will be having their annual corned beef and cabbage dinner in March, and the price will be $7 per person. And they're also working on their Trails Fair for May 19th, where they're going to have someone there from tourism, and the Trails are Wine Trail, Chocolate Trail, and there was a few others. So they're putting a good program together for the seniors and people to be able to go and see what's available within our state and visit around the state on vacations or whatever. Third report is Infrastructure Met, and we reviewed three state steep grants that will be presented tonight. The first one is a combination facade loan and one for redevelopment for demolition funds, grant total of $450,000, $250,000 for facade loan, and the other 200 for possible demolition if it's needed. The facade loan program has done wonders for us over the years. Over the past nine years, we've done 26 projects, which has cost $743. And what this does is it gives a return on investment to us. I talked to Peter, every dollar that goes in, there's $6 in private investment that goes to offset that, and it's increased the valuations 3.2 million, or an average $160,000 per project. And with that one grant, if all the money or none of the money is needed for that redevelopment demolition, we could go back to the state to get that reallocated towards facade loans so that we could use it for that, which would be a good thing. The second grant is for improvements at the Standish House, to upgrade the site, work exterior painting, ADA things, and that's for $496,000. And the third grant will be for implementation of, or improvements to the Solomon Wells House. Will take care of electrical upgrades in the park near there, and parking lot and drainage improvements, the total is $386,000, and this will help with affairs that are handled down by the Solomon Wells, like the carnival, and also with the farmer's market meeting down there. So these are three projects that will all help with economic development in this town.
Thanks, Tony. Any other counselor reports? Counselor comments? Mike?
We have the St. Patrick's Day Parade coming up. Weathersfield has a lot of involvement in it. The high school marching band will be there, Griffith, the Enth Academy, the Police Department, Fire Department, public officials, and Colonel John Chester, Fishton Drum Corps. It's March 15, Saturday, at 11:00 a.m. Hope to see everybody come out.
Thank you. Jerry?
As a follow-up to that, Mike's being very modest. Mike works very hard to get the St. Patrick's Day Parade Coordinator for the Weathersfield, and in fact, this year, his work is being recognized, and he's been selected as the overall deputy marshal for the entire parade, so that's a huge honor, and we're very proud of you. Congratulations. So now, we'll all show up, because...
Absolutely.
The other thing is, today's a big day. It's the mayor's birthday, so we won't sing "Happy Birthday," but...
Thank you for not.
Yeah. Want to recognize that. And then the third thing is, on February 27th, I attended the Weathersfield Game Club Dinner. The mayor was there, Donna was there, Jeff Bridges was there, and I'd never been to one before. It was a packed house, the food was delicious, and it was just a wonderful night, and a lot of people that you don't see at other events were there, so it was a privilege to be there. I enjoyed it.
Thank you, Jared. Other comments?
Yeah, actually, I should have gone, I should have mentioned it when Tony finishes reporting infrastructure. Maybe Tony is chair, if you want to maybe talk about one other thing that was talked about at the infrastructure, which was the triangular piece of property over at the Wilkes Farm that was, that we're looking at to incorporate into the right-of-way for Old Reservoir Road.
Basically, what it is, is there's a triangle within the Wilkes property that was bought separately that could be used to give the clearance to extend the road if necessary over in that area. So it's been referred to the town attorney to see what would be made necessary to do that. So we'll probably see that on a future committee's agenda to be reviewed again.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Doug. Jeff?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just one thing this evening in the audience tonight is Mike O'Neill. He is our new Finance Director as of 9:00 this morning. He's had a busy day. We went through the pension committees and all their things, so just want to introduce him to the council and welcome him to Weathersfield.
Welcome aboard, Mike. I want to say, your name got mentioned in the process after Jeff told me, and I had a chance to look at some of the Google stuff online about you, and it's very impressive, and your history at New Haven was phenomenal, and we're very, very grateful to have you here in Weathersfield. We hope we meet your expectations, I'm sure.
Pleased to be here.
Welcome, Mike. Dolores, anything?
No.
Terrific. Okay, we're going to move on to council action. Under B1A, acceptance of resignations from boards and commissions. Deputy Mayor?
Move to accept the resignation as the Municipal Agent for Children, Nancy Stillwell. The term was 3/14/2014 to 6/30/2015. Second?
Motion in the second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have B1B, appointments to boards and commissions. Again, Deputy Mayor?
Move to accept the following appointments to boards and commissions. The Tourism Commission, Lisa Walsh, 51 Center Street, 33, 2014 to 6/30/2016. And to the Central Connecticut Health District, Angela Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue, term 3/3, 2014 to 6/30/2014. And Teresa Urbansky, 46 Marmar Court, 3/3, 2014 to 6/30/2016. And finally, to the Cox Cable Television Advisory Council, Richard Gary, 35 Harding Street, term 3/3, 2014 to 6/30/2016.
Thank you, Steve. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any comments?
Paul, I just mentioned that it's good that we're getting these roles filled on the Central Connecticut Health District, because we only had one of our three, one of our three spots filled, and if that person, Diane Doot, wasn't present, the board really couldn't meet, because they need to have representation from each town. So I'm glad we have a couple of people stepping up here.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And Counselor Hammond, I believe you have two appointments?
I do. To the Insurance Commission...
To the Insurance Commission, to fill a vacancy, Robert Cobb, 99 Meadowview, for a period of 3/13/14 to 6/30/2014. Zoning Board of Appeals, an alternate to fill a vacancy, Michael Viera, 116 Black Birch, from 33, 2014 to 6/30/2014.
Thank you, Counselor. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thanks to those who are joining us. We have no unfinished business. We will move on to B3A, Authorization for the Submission of Three Steep Grants.
Motion to authorize the town manager to submit the steep grant proposal as requested. Second?
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you heard earlier, the Infrastructure Committee reviewed three steep grant proposals with the staff. Peter Gillespie, Sally Katz, and Kathy Bagley, the patrons of those three specific grants are here this evening to answer specific questions. But as you heard, $450,000 for facade loan redevelopment funds, $496,000 request for Standish House ADA upgrades and site work, exterior painting improvements, and at the Solomon Wells House, electrical upgrades and parking lot improvements. We've prioritized those as is required under the steep program for multiple submissions, and those are the in-priority order. And we'd be happy to answer any questions or if you'd like to hear specifics from the interested parties on those. Let me know.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilors have questions about any of these? Donna?
I have a couple of questions. I think they're three good projects. I think the Solomon Wells House, I'm sorry that that's number three out of the priority. I think that that is a facility that is used by the community. You know, it belongs to the community. I think the upgrades would certainly be of definite value for all of the different activities that take place there throughout the year. So the farmer's market, the carnivals, the other events that, you know, the band concerts that are there, and I'm sorry to see that it is the third, because the parking lot is a disaster. If there's any, any moisture in that area, it becomes a pond. We have experienced that numerous times. And then regarding the first grant for the facade loan program, I would actually like to speak against putting that, the facade loan and the demolition, or potential demolition of the 1,000 Silas Dean, and look to take 120 of that and put that with the Solomon Wells, so it brings it down to two grants. I think it's unlikely that we'll get three. And as we've seen in the past, we can prioritize them to whatever we think is the most important, and they don't always regard that as, when they're looking at them, or choose what our priority might be. And then, thirdly, in regards to the Standish House, just looking at what the long-term plan is with that building, and I know we've asked this before, Jeff, but how much have we spent over the last five years in maintenance costs? I know that it was, it's been very frequent that physical services gets calls to do certain repairs or things on-site, and, you know, what do all those things add up to? So how much have we spent on that building in the last five years? We know it's been painted. We know that there's been other things that have been worked on, and then just the normal day-to-day kind of things that take people away from other things to deal with issues there. I think it would be helpful to understand the needs of that building further. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Just as a follow-up, Peter, could, if you could come up from, just a follow-up question. I'm wondering if you can give us a little feel for what our experience has been with the submissions historically, how many we've submitted, how many we've gotten on average, and I'm sure Infrastructure looked at the priorities, but maybe you can address that a bit.
In terms of the frequency of the steep applications that we've requested, I think we've been very fortunate in, until recently, actually receiving funds for all of our previous applications. The application, this application that we're asking for authority to apply for is a second time request. The last time, we didn't get rejected, but they just didn't fund it the first time around. So in the past, we've received funding for the streetscape and town hall improvements out front. We have received two previous applications for facade funds, and I'm trying to recall the others.
Millwoods Park received a significant...
Right. We did receive Millwoods Park as well. So the steep program has been pretty generous to the town over the last few years.
Tony and others on infrastructure, I know you addressed some of these questions. Maybe you can weigh in a little on some of Donna's points.
As far as the priorities, once we went through each, each grant with the department heads involved, we asked, priority-wise, which were the most important, and asked the manager to give us a priority, and he did, and we went along with his recommendation, and staffs were the order that we did go with. So that's how we came up with the list of priorities that we did, Donna. But the staff did a good presentation, told us exactly what each, you know, grant would entail and what we could get out of them.
I just had to speak my piece.
Oh, of course. I have a question.
And my feeling, well, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Steve, sorry.
No, my feeling on the, certainly on the first priority, all of these are, as Donna said, important projects and really good projects. The first project, however, certainly has the, or first grant has the potential to bring in more tax revenue, obviously, as well. So I think there's sort of a bang for the buck there as well that I thought made that a high priority. Certainly, to the extent we can help some development on the, some of these long vacant properties in the Silas Dean Highway, it's important to do so. So I think that, from my view, I think that that one sort of jumped to the top, and then the other two are, it's a close, it's a close call. That's just, that was just my thought process. But again, and I relied also on staff recommendations as well.
Stath?
Peter, how many, I thought in our, in our infrastructure meeting, you'd mentioned this was, we've never submitted three before.
We've never submitted three at the same time before. That's correct. We've submitted two before, I believe, and were fortunate one year, I think, to get two. One was smaller than, than the other, but no, we've never filed three at the same time in the same fiscal year.
So, you know, to me, and I think in the infrastructure meeting, I expressed this, that I think it's unlikely that we're going to get three steep grants, especially considering the state of, the state. The, and the order, you know, of priority, I think the first one, the facade loan demolition funds, I think that is the biggest bang for our buck. I agree with that. I think we should limit this thing, this submission to either one or two. And the second one, for me, would be the Solomon Wells House, as it's, there's so much public use, and there's much more of a need. The second one, on the Standish House, you know, this is something that I think we need to first ask the larger question, which we did ask in an infrastructure committee meeting before, and that was something that the town manager did also approve, and we were going to look at whether we should even own this building to begin with. But that seemed to have been just shut down, and that conversation never went anywhere. You know, I think people in the public would be very disappointed to know that there's a 50-year lease on that building from the town to the Historical Commission, or the Historical Society, for no other purpose other than to fund it. I think there's certainly other mechanisms that we can, that we can provide through our budget process to take care of some of that, to keep the Historical Society whole, but to put this property back in private hands, or in private hands. Right now, what we're saddled with is, the town is saddled with all the repairs and maintenance that are needed on the building, all the capital improvements. So, and I'm not sure that the items in, that are subject to the steep grant are actually not necessary, but I don't know that we're obligated to do it. So I'm afraid that's also going to open up, it's a slippery slope, I think. So we've never really had that discussion, and I think that, you know, that should be had here to see where everybody feels the long-term position of the town is on this property. So, I mean, maybe, you know, maybe the mayor and Jerry could speak to it because that 50-year lease, I think, was created and approved by you guys.
Well, first of all, I haven't been involved with the Historical Society until recently, but I do believe you, Stath, you were the liaison prior to me. I don't think this is just an item that we can bring up at the town council and decide this is the way we want to go without having significant input from many parts of the And it would affect how the Historical Society operates, and it would affect current functioning business down there. So, you know, I think it needs to be looked at carefully. If people don't think this is one of the top priorities in terms of funding the steep grant, that's one thing, but to just wholesale decide, you know what, maybe we'll sell the Standish House, that's not acceptable to me, and I think it needs, it would need a lot of analysis before I'd be even willing to consider it.
Well, I agree with you. That's why I think it should be removed. I don't think we should, we should commit the town to anything at this point, especially knowing that in the CIC budget, that's been put in there without any discussion either for a handicap grant. And that's not a legal obligation of ours. So I agree with what you're saying, but I think we should, I think we should talk about it.
If people's feeling is that it's, it won't be realistic to get three steep grant proposals funded, that's one issue, but to make a public policy decision just on the fly tonight, I don't agree with it at all.
Yeah, that's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking for maybe a reason why there was a 50-year lease to help give us, give us some color on, on the whole background of it. So I figured you were the best one to do that.
You've been the liaison. You're more familiar with it than I am.
Actually, Mike was liaison, and I stepped in, and the Historical Society didn't really want to talk about it. So you are now.
I went to one meeting. That doesn't make me an expert in a week.
Okay, so, I mean, I agree with you. I agree with you. That's why I'm saying this is important enough that I think we should hold off.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike. Okay. I would agree that, I think the Solomon Wells has been around long enough with that parking lot, and if you go down there, I've been there a few times where it's rained for three days, you don't realize when you pull in that you're stepping out in a foot of water while you're walking up, and I know there's a lot of people that rent it, and they don't realize when all their family and friends come there that that's the situation they're getting into because the parking lot's down below, and then they rent it and they go down there, and it's just a mess. I, I think the Solomon Wells House should be put as a higher priority.
I just, you know, I'm going to echo what Jerry said. I think we really have to be careful before we make any decisions regarding that, that building, the Standish House. It's, it's the first building that we see we come into the town. It's got some, obviously, historical significance to the town, and it's, and it frankly is something that we, it is a huge benefit to the town, and it's certainly something that we shouldn't, shouldn't do lightly. And, and again, raising it and discussing it in this fashion, it's got to be studied. And it's something that we really should be careful with. The Historical Society does a ton of good in this town, and we're talking about interpretive trail and all of that, and it's something that's, that's important to the town. It's, it's what makes many people come to our town. It's what most of us are, many of us are proud of in our town, and I think we really have to be careful about doing things without, without thinking them through.
I agree with you. I think we need to think it through. I think we need to talk about it publicly. I mean, it's basically a commercial building, and the Historical Society is, I mean, there's a funding mechanism. The, the reason for that lease, unless you tell me differently, Jerry and Paul, is really to fund the Historical Society, which I agree is a great group. There is historical significance in what they do, but other than the shell of this building, it is not really their core mission. And if, and if the, the intention is to fund them, then we can do that through the budget process, keep them whole. We could still put this into private hands. Right now, you have a tenant that doesn't have any equity in the building, but yet is sinking money into it for no reason. He, he's expressed an interest in actually having, being able to purchase it. So not only would it get it into, back on the tax rolls, it would give an owner the ability to invest in it. And I think any private owner is going to do better than the town can do in, in private ownership. That's not, that's not the, the mission of the Historical Society. And as far as preserving, you know, what's left of the historic part of the building, which is really only the exterior, it's been modified several times inside, it's, it's a bar and a restaurant. And if we want to preserve the building, that's why we have the Historic Commission. And I think Mike Rel can speak to that pretty well of how that would protect that building. So I'm not saying we rush into a decision. I think it needs to be discussed publicly. People have to understand that there is this long-term lease and why we actually entered into it. But I think the Historical Society should be here too and have an open discussion on it because there is a win-win situation, or a win-win opportunity for the town to shed itself of its obligations of, of the maintenance and have the building be owned privately and be cared for in a much better fashion than we could with taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Back to the steep grant. Peter, when the, let's say we put all, all three in regardless of the order, it, does the, does the state look at it and say, because this is number one, that's the town's first priority, this is number two, the second, this is number three, the third, or they just, did they just put them all sort of equally into this mix along with other towns' prospects and say, oh, well, I like these, A, B, and C? If, for example, if Solomon Wells is the third one, does that therefore make it the least likely to be funded, or is it, is it equally likely as the other two?
They didn't provide a great deal of explanatory background in terms of the request to prioritize, but I would have to say that if we did, you know, rack and stack one, two, three, the third choice would be least likely to be funded, or very unlikely to be funded based on past practices.
And maybe, Tony was mentioning that it was a recommendation of, of staff, but could you maybe just go through staff's decision-making process on how to rank them?
I'm sorry, Jeff.
The facade loan program has a history of greater returns, and it's a very popular program. We have people in a waiting list that want to see that money in the community. So that was number one. We also have an opportunity on the, on the Silas Dean, if we can get some money to help with demo, demolition, on redevelopment. So that was the first priority, as you heard this evening, the biggest bang for the buck. The Standish House, we have needs there in terms of making that an even more viable business. The return on investment there from the community to the Historical Society, to the Historic District is great if we do those modifications, which would include additional internal ADA compliance, the elevator and so forth, and site work. So that one had a significant return on investment. Solomon Wells, not that it doesn't, it, there's definitely needs there, but in terms of return on the dollar, it had just a lower return than the other ones from a, from a, you know, from a perspective of that. Now, did we cost it out dollar-for-dollar? No. But when you look at the investment versus what happens, you know, and the state looks for economic development projects. Last year, they were interested in generators for emergency operations centers. This year, they're refocused back on economic development projects. So the Solomon Wells House, although with the farmer's market provides economic development on a scale of the three, it provided the least economic... economic development of all of them. Now, it would be a tremendous asset to get that done for the town's use of that facility and the electrical work at the park to, to help with those functions down at the park, but from an economic development point of view, it doesn't stack up as high as the other two.
Got you. Thank you. Very good explanation.
If I could, I mean, I'd like to amend the motion to, to remove number two and submit only the two steep grants, the facade loan redevelopment demolition funds, and number three, improvement to Solomon Wells House and grounds. I just need a second.
Second.
Any discussion about that proposed amendment? We have a proposed amendment and a second. We'll vote on that first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Do we need a vote?
So I have four, no?
Five, four, is that correct? So that would fail. Thank you.
Before we go to the vote on the, the motion as it exists, just a couple of points. One of the things that I, I think is important, and I've talked to a, a couple of folks at policy management, as well as a couple of our legislative contacts about this, I think these are three pretty distinct projects that on their face probably will be evaluated independently and, and have different ups or downs. And I think the town manager, I think just appropriately outlined the, the thinking on the part of staff, which I want to respect in moving forward on the vote with it as it is. But I would also tell you that it's my understanding that by submitting these steep grants for these two other projects, which obviously have great importance to our community, if one or two were to make it through, that would be terrific. If, if one or both were not to get through, it provides some additional impetus for us to push for some support in the state level through our legislative body, who are asking us a little bit about, as they go through the session, some projects that might be important to us. So I think one of the things that might happen, if in fact one of these or both did not make it, or all three could frankly not make it based on the, the economy, but it does give us greater strength to say we attempted one other avenue first, and therefore this becomes a priority even higher for one of those funding sources separate from steep. No doubt that all three of these have importance to us, and, you know, the difference between Standish House and Solomon Wells, for example, is probably relatively small. When you talk about priority, they have different demands and different requirements. So I, I favor all three at least going forward, and I suspect Peter will be able to articulate those proposals on behalf of our staff in that fashion. Finally, the one, one point, the Standish House issue, I think, obviously can and should be discussed at some point in some fashion. It has been out there, I think, circulating for about a year, that there was some thought or discussion about it, and, and several groups in town, including the governing body for the, the Historic District, as well as members who have been involved with the district, have a very strong negative reaction to that. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have that discussion. I think we should. I have some strong feelings about it myself, and I've communicated them to our town manager. But the Standish House has a long history, for example, in town, and I suspect it would be quite a groundswell of resistance to the thought of selling off one of our crown jewels to the public. But again, that discussion could happen separate from this motion. So I'm gonna call the question. We have a, a motion in a second to approve these steep grants to go forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? I believe this one passes five, four as well. Thank you.
Five, four.
We are moving to B four, rejection of bids for the Willard Pool. Have a motion?
Motion to reject the bids received for the Willard Pool filter pump strainer replacement.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Kathy Bagley's here this evening to talk about specifics, but there was some money in the capital budget to upgrade the filters and pump systems at the Willard Pool. And when the bids came back in, it was greater than the amount of money available. We've requested additional funding in this year's CIP to do the project and add monies to the, the project. So we would reject these bids this evening and bid again this, this summer to do this. According to Kathy, the project would, I mean, the filters would still work this year?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a question, Kath. When these come in like that, and we're obviously over what we had in the, the CIP budget, do we ever have discussion with the low bidder about how close we are, and whether there can be any consideration, given our limited budget?
We did do, yeah, we did do that with the low bidder and with the architect, because the bids truly came in higher than we anticipated. And a lot of it had to do with the equipment costs. They came in much higher than was originally estimated. So it was actually the material that we were purchasing.
So the materials, what portion of the 69 roughly? Three-quarters of it or something?
Two-thirds.
Yep. And their reaction was, sorry, that's the number, can't move it?
Not with the material, no. Because they were getting that, that was the manufacturer's price given to the low bidder.
And so, I'm sorry, Jeff, you said you were gonna think about trying to rebid this at, at some point later in the summer?
Yes, there's money in the CIP for additional work at Willard, and we'll use those funds to, to cover, you know, to rebid it. With these, these funds won't lapse, so we'll just add on.
The 52 will still be there. So anticipating the number might come in the same, we might move some funds after, after this year.
Well, there's some additional funds proposed in next year's capital budget through CIC that we could use to, to fund the project.
And so you're thinking, Kath, we can get one more year out of the current system, if we're lucky?
Yes, yeah. We've been systematically upgrading the filter operations, and this was just the next step.
Got you. Thank you. Other questions or thoughts? We have a motion, a second on the table to reject this bid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I just need to say something.
Yep. Thank you, Kathy. Go ahead, Jeff.
Going back on the former steep issue, I'm not bringing it up for discussion, but there was a typo. It should be 497, not 496 in total.
So we'll have to amend that, right?
No, we'll just submit it.
You're correct. 497, you said?
497.
Sorry. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Good catch.
Donna caught it.
Very good. Thanks, Donna. Okay, we have, under B five, we have two ordinances for introduction. These, I think, are just being introduced for amendment. Jeff, do you have anything you need to say about those?
No, I think the one is the amendment to the OPEB trust ordinance, which, when we adopted it originally, it provided for two, in addition to the trustees, the, the town officer trustees, it provided for the appointment of two residents to serve on the Board of Trustees, but it didn't identify how they were selected or terms of office. So this amendment provides for those specifics in terms of those two trustees. And then Dolores is, the second one is a grant, so Dolores has that information.
Paul, I just have one question. If we have any questions about this, it's gonna be a hearing at the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
For the ordinance. Can we submit those questions to Jeff?
Absolutely.
So that we'll be prepared?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Any other comments on the two mo, on the two ordinance for introduction? If not, we will move on to approval of the minutes of the town council meeting, February 17th, 2014. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes, additions, corrections? There's quite a bit in there, so hopefully everybody had a chance to read it. Mike?
Thanks, Paul. Page 44, third paragraph, seventh and eighth lines starts with, is that we are currently in a projected surplus for the fiscal, not physical, year. And same with the eighth line, fiscal, not physical, years.
Thank you, Council. You got that, Dolores? I assume?
Yes.
Others? Changes? Corrections? Thank you. Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unabstained.
Thank you, Donna. Abstentions?
I was thinking about you from the sun.
I know you were. And you were nice enough to talk with me, I think, at one point, and remind me that you were in 85 while I was in a cask watching snowfall. Thanks.
Sure, anytime, Paul.
You're the best. Okay, we are public comment. Any other public comment this evening? Mr. Colentoni, welcome back. No, we, we love having you.
And your daughter.
And your daughter, by the way.
Thank you. Just one observation. Last year, for about five, six months, I was looking for a house, a new house. And the only place that we were basically interested was Newington and Wethersfield. And we saw a lot of houses. And of course, I, I don't really have statistics, but now in my mind, looking back, what I found that Newington and Wethersfield are basically, well, hedges in towns and good towns and whatnot. But after our search, and after we, you know, that was for my son, and he bought a house in Wethersfield, and I noticed that $200,000 in Newington buys less than $200,000 in Wethersfield. And I also noticed that at $200,000 in Newington, the taxes are about $4,000 plus or minus. In Wethersfield, they're about $6,000. I also understand that basically, you know, there is more industry in Newington, so I guess the taxes are a little bit offset here and there and everywhere. But I also thought that because there are more land than New, than Wethersfield, the demand for the housing in Wethersfield should be a little bit more than there. Now, why, why $200,000 buys more in Wethersfield than in Newington? And the only thing I can find is, is because of the taxes. The taxes are too high. So whenever you guys are gonna talk about, you know, the budget, you know, let's see what we can do. Because the, the Board of Education wants, I think, was 4.78 percentage more. They never said the amount of money per se, just the percentage, but 50 thou, $50 million, about 4 percent, it's, it's $2 million more, you know? And most of that, I was reading, Wethersfield life, it's contractual. It's always contractual. And I said it before, and I'm gonna say it again, there is no need for unions in government work. Thank you.
Paul Cop, under Executive Square. I'm disappointed that our new finance director has left. I wonder if you could tell us a little bit about him, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Town Manager?
That wouldn't be appropriate during public comment, but if you have some thoughts on him, I'm sure after an appropriate time, or you make an appointment to see Jeff, you can share your questions or thoughts.
I just think it's one of the most important jobs in the town.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We ought to be proud of him. Okay.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. It was interesting tonight that we now have a new finance director. I think that's good. Unfortunately, I, I would have thought, when you hired this person, there would be some fanfare as far as what his objectives and goals will be, and the great things he's gonna do for us. I didn't hear any of that. I didn't hear anything regarding shared services with the finance department between the town side, nor the Board of Education side, which I would think would have been a nice, simple switch, or added responsibilities to this new ma, to this new finance director, and then the, the, the board could reduce some of their costs by not, by relinquishing their, their current director, and, you know, and, and give us some savings. Again, you know, the position's been open for eight or nine months, and just, you know, I wish we knew more about this man and what he was gonna do, okay? Going forward, I, I've read in the paper where, and tonight was discussed as well, you know, you're looking for a library director. I guess Nancy Stillman, is that her name, Stillman, or Still?
Stillwell.
Stillwell? Yeah, she is, she is retired also, and you're gonna be looking to fill that position. Maybe, you know, without filling a position, maybe that's the way to go with these two positions. And then, of course, we have Rayanne Palmer, who has since retired as well. Sounds like we have a lot of personnel leaving. And then, of course, you brought on Rayanne Palmer as a consultant, which I could not understand. If she's retiring, she's gonna be working on that new radio system and then leaving, I would have thought you'd hire someone or assign someone who you already have, that's gonna be a long-term employee, who would, who would gain a lot of knowledge and be here, and be the person to call on when there's a problem. I know she's, Rayanne is able to be brought back, but every time you bring them back, bring people back, it's more money, and you still lose. You still lose. If you had the full-time employee doing that work, being part of that work, you, you have a good foundation. I don't think you're gonna have the foundation now. So, I mean, I, I wish her well in, in, in her retirement, as well as the other ladies as well. But I think in Rayanne's case, I, I just could not understand why you're doing it with her. I know you're speaking, talking tonight about the Standish House. I'm not up on all of that, but selling assets, I don't know, being that building is historic and all, and it might be protected by certain things, maybe leaving it the way it is. But we should also look at the full cost of what it is. Maybe the Historic Society should be picking up costs instead of the town paying for all the costs. Make them pay for it. They, they get, they get grants from the state of Connecticut. They get grants from elsewhere, I'm sure. If not, they should. They, they collect revenue, just like they're doing when they, whatever, whatever they're doing, they're making some money somewhere. They could take care of some of these items. I don't think the taxpayers should be carrying everything like we currently are. And, and, and the state is broke to begin with. So, you know, how much can you expect to get from those people? They're, they're looking at hard times. They deserve hard times, the way they fool money away. But unfortunately, it all reflects back on us. And times are not gonna be good like you think they are. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
For what pur, what purpose?
For personnel matter. Oh, Jim, were you gonna come up to speak, or are you leaving? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut it. Thank you.
Can we vote?
Yeah, we vote for it to go into executive session, please. All those in favor?
Aye.